Approval of the agenda, I would ask the board if we can possibly remove item 11, Resolution 2021 dash oh two, amending the 2020 budget since we have to publish it before we can vote on it. So can I hear a motion to approve the agenda with item 11 removed?
Item 11 or item 10?
It should be Resolution 2021 oh two, amending 2020 budget.
Got it, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda with item 11 removed.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that motion carries, all right, let's move on to announcements. I have several. First off, I would like to say that Delta County Health Department is trying to put together a mass vaccination of a thousand people for March 6th. Now you have to be registered, this is not a walk-in clinic, you have to be registered and they have to call you to do this. Not sure where it's going to be held yet, but it's in the works. The other thing is, good news, we, Delta County and Peonia are in the blue on the COVID dial, which means if this holds true, then we can have our next meeting in person. And we can start moving, opening up the offices and everything. And let's see, so also Peonia in Motion is having a public input session, this is the last two that they're taking at this point, and it's going to be Wednesday, the 25th, from 11:30 to 1:30, and that's an open house, and anybody can come and talk. And the second one that day will be 5:30 to 7:30. And that's at www.peyoniainmotion.com. And then the last thing I'd like to do is, since the US passed the 500,000 people dead because of COVID, marked yesterday. And just to put this in perspective, this is more people who have died from this than everyone who was killed in World War I, and World War II, and in the Vietnam War. Together, in one year, we have passed this mark. I would like us to please just take a moment of silence in remembrance and empathy for all the people who are suffering through all of this. Okay, thank you, everyone. Does anybody else have an announcement? Okay, seeing none, let's move on to recognition of visitors and guests. How many people would like to speak today? All right, we have one, all right, Suzanne, you have five minutes. Go for it.
Hi, this is Suzanne Watson, and I just want to say there was an ad for a position of employment down at Town Hall, and it was advertised in the High Country Shopper and the DCI. But if you go to the town website and look under that section, it says, there are no employment opportunities in Peonia right now. And then also, if you just do a Google search, Peonia jobs, it doesn't come up online either. So I was wondering why this was such a limited search for this position?
Okay.
And that's all I had to say. I was a little disappointed to see the lack of advertising. Thanks.
All right, thank you, yes, Corinne.
The reason it wasn't on the website was because there were some issues with linking it, but that actually was corrected and updated first thing this morning. It is listed on the town website under employment opportunities.
Okay, thank you, all right. Anyone else like to speak? This is on any subject that's not on the agenda. All right, seeing none, let's move on to staff reports, administrators' report.
Okay, so we have the written report in the packet, and I did receive an email with a few more questions that I was going to provide some information on. One topic on the written report was the fencing reserved funds for Twin Lakes, and I was asked for clarification regarding the relationship between the different funds that are restricted for the sewer, different sewer funds. So there are three restricted funds, one is the AMCO bond. The other sewer restricted fund is the $500-plus thousand that is specific to the sale of the sewer properties on the highway. And the third restricted fund is the reserve for the reclamation for the Twin Lakes property, which is the old sewer treatment plant. And that is the information that's included in the packet regarding the fencing agreement that we have with the neighboring property. Um, let's see. The SCADA system, Travis is going to provide that update on his report. And, uh, let's see. And the SCID steer, we'll talk about when we get to the SCID steer, some of these other things are actually agenda items, we'll give some more information when we get to them. So that's all I have unless anybody has any questions.
All right, questions for Corinne, Karen?
Uh, about the Twin Lakes, we have this money in reserve, and we have been talking about the brownfield thing. I'm thinking that now would be a good time to go ahead and get that, see if we can get that brownfield grant for, because, especially since the concrete and all that, I mean, we should, we should clean that up and get it done.
Okay. Okay, and Bill?
Yes, I had a question on the COVID relief funds. Is that, is that particular project done, or are we still continuing to receive money and/or payout requests?
They extended the deadline for the expending and reporting until the end of 2021. We still have approximately $16,000 out of the original money we were granted, that we, we haven't allocated it yet, we were waiting as the year moves on to see where it could best be put to use. But there hasn't been any additional funds received by the town to date.
Okay, because I was thinking that we need to have a, a report on that fund, on that, that, those funds, to see how much we total we took in, and where we expended it, and how much is left, just so we all have a good idea.
Okay.
Thank you.
Corinne, I wanted to ask about the dark skies. I'm a little confused about who is responsible for the next steps on that ordinance. Is it the Dark Skies Citizen Committee, or is it our internal town committee that's responsible to clear that up?
My understanding was the direction at the last meeting was the ordinance with the suggestions was going back to the Dark Skies Committee, that was going to implement those suggestions and bring it back to the board, for the board to review.
So it's the Citizens Committee, not you, me, Travis, and Neil?
Correct.
Okay, great. Just wanted to clear that up, because that was not the understanding of the Dark Skies Committee, so they will get on it right away.
Okay.
Yes, Nick?
Um, yeah, Corinne, I was just wondering if you have any update on the lead contamination in the drinking water, or is that going to be in Travis's report?
Um, what specifically would you be looking for, for an update?
Well, the, the letter that was sent out. Has that, has the lead been taken care of in those specific neighborhoods?
So it's not neighborhood contamin, contamination. What occurred was the town is required to pull 20 sample site locations from sites that are approved by CDPHG that are representative of the entire distribution system in town and out of town. Typically, the town pulls a mix of inside taps, so kitchen sinks, things like that, and some exterior taps. In December, so we pulled in June, when we pulled in June, all 20 samples came back, there was no exceedance in lead. When we pulled again in December, we had six come back exceeding in lead. The difference is that in December, we pulled from all exterior hydrants after a period of time of the water sitting in the pipe, which can lead to lead leaching into the water. And so the next steps, those were all pulled from private locations, those are not samples that are taken from the public water system. It's not in our distribution system that's then being distributed, you know, to everyone on the system. So now the next steps were to publish the notification and let people know, and now we're waiting to receive our sample test containers, so that we can resample those locations and send those off and get those results back, which will then determine if there's any other follow-up, or any other mechanisms that are triggered by having a second exceedance reported. CDPHG gives the town until June to do that, but we chose not to do that. We weren't waiting, we don't want people concerned, we don't, we're not trying to instill fear, but we're also not trying to downplay. So we immediately started those processes. As soon as we get those sample kits in, we will draw the samples, send them off, and when we get those results, which we anticipate will show no lead exceedance, we will publish those results as well.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I, I did receive a few inquiries about that, so that's, that's good, thank you.
I'm, I'm sure, and I could add to that, sorry, Bill, I just saw your hand go up. I do want to add to that as well, that the language that's included in those notices is approved language that is straight from a template that we receive from the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment. I have spoken to them, they do allow now the towns, municipalities to add additional descriptive language, but you're not able to take language out, and there's some specific things that are written in those that have to stay written exactly the way they are to meet the regulations when it comes to reporting. So it's not in an effort to not provide all the details or provide clear enough information, it was just a limited amount of editing that went out in those initial letters, which was one of the reasons that we did include the cover letter, which, the cover letter and the notice letters were reviewed and approved by CDPHG before we sent them out. And now that we have the clarification that we can add even more descriptive language, we will do that. Next time, there will be more descriptive languages, and be assured that those notices are reviewed by the state before we send them out, to make sure that all the information is included.
Bill?
I was just going to ask, does the town, in its, on the pipes that they control, is there any concern for lead in any section of the pipe? Or is this strictly a homeowner notification, essentially a homeowner problem?
Travis, do you want to add to that?
Um, we have roughly about three blocks that, that possibly have lead pigtail service lines. Out of those three blocks, I do test all of them, and all of those have come back below the detectable limit, or below the 15 parts per billion levels.
And Travis, just where, where are these three blocks?
One is the 200 block of Main, the other one is the 300 block of Orchard, and then the one, the 200 block of Orchard.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Corinne? Okay, seeing none, anything from the audience? Yes, Suzanne?
This is, since we're talking about it, and I, I don't want to ask during Travis's report, but can you repeat that? When you take the water sample from a town, the town property, do you flush it first? Or did you say you just take it directly? When you're flushing, you know, when you're taking the sample, when you're bypassing personal residences? The, the reason I was wondering is, a lot of people don't flush their lines, and I was wondering if we have to flush our line to get the town water, or when you're doing the testing method, does it just, do you just put it right into the test tube without running the water for a minute or two minutes, or whatever, when you're testing it on the town side?
Thank you, Suzanne. Corinne?
I'm going to let Travis answer his process when he pulls samples.
Um, all of our samples, except for lead and copper, are, they have a flushing period, a five-minute flushing period. Lead and copper is actually a first-draw sample. They, and you have to have the water, water has to sit in the pipes for a minimum of six hours, and that's where you're getting your, your true lead sample.
Okay, thank you, Travis. Anyone else from the audience? For the public? Okay, seeing none. Oh, wait, Sharon?
Okay, now you can hear me.
Yes?
I want to, I'm at 227 North Fork Avenue. This doesn't have anything to do with the water.
Well, okay, is it anything that Corinne has already talked about?
No.
Okay, well then, we are only discussing those items at this point in time.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Sharon. All right, anything for Corinne on her report? All right, seeing none, let's move on to Public Works Utilities. Travis?
Um, you have seen my report.
Got it?
I did submit the written report. I did get an update on the SCADA system, which is complete, and delivery of the iPad will be early next week. I just received that notification today. We are working at potholes, which are getting very terrible at the moment, but they are out working on that. We are doing a lot of maintenance at the water and sewer wastewater plants, trying to get them all up and running again. We do have an air, one aerator that's down right, right at the moment that we're working on. Did receive the new lab equipment today, so I'm pretty excited to be able to start getting to be able to test some other parameters for the water and also the wastewater. And that's all I've got, unless you guys have any questions.
All right, questions for Travis from the board? Yes, Tammy?
Yeah, a couple. I don't see anything about SCADA. We need an update on SCADA?
He just gave it, he just gave it, Tammy, he said it was complete, that the iPad would be in next.
Oh, I must have blinked, okay. So I would like to have a more in-depth explanation of why the school meter couldn't go in. I mean, this has been going on for a long time. What happened?
When we, when we went in to install the meter, we went off of the school has built, and their has built showed it, the, the main line coming into the school went, from that fire hydrant went straight into the school. When we dug it, dug down, we dug about eight foot down, and it could never find the line. So we started searching around, did some witch, line witching with brass rods, and possibly found it underneath the asphalt. So instead of tearing up the asphalt, and I wanted to bring in a pothole machine to make sure that was where the line was at. And then talking with John McHugh with the school district, he says if it is underneath the pavement, he would rather wait till after school's out, so we're not tearing up his road during school, to where we could get asphalt.
So do you have a new date set, or do you, are you just going to wait until school gets out?
I need to wait. We are scheduled this week to pothole, to make sure where to actually find the line first. And if it is under the asphalt, then we're, we'll have to wait till after the school's out. If it's not there, and possibly within 20 feet of underneath the bankment, in the dirt, we will install it at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Bill?
Concerning the potholing, are you, are you going to dig up the asphalt?
We're, we're going to do a core, like a 12-inch core hole in it, where we can patch it back if we need to, and be able to patch it back with cold batch.
Approximately, how deep do you anticipate this line?
I'm anticipating around four feet.
Okay. That doesn't have any tracer on it? It was installed with it?
No, it was installed in 81, with no tracer.
Michelle? Oh, did you have more, Bill?
No, I'm just saying, thank you.
Michelle?
How does this project interact with the potential consolidation of the schools? And if the building's not going to be in use in a school in the future, should we pause?
Yeah, Corinne?
Regardless of which consolidation option the school district chooses, that school building will still be a functioning school.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, seeing, anything from the public? Yes, Suzanne?
I, I think she might not have heard you, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, Suzanne?
Oh, sorry, I didn't hear you, Mary. I had a question for Travis about the wastewater treatment plant, and was it the Twin Lakes property, we mediated to the satisfaction of the health department? Why, why is this brownfield ward being dragged out from time to time now? Travis, can you give us a rundown on how that was put to rest?
Um, how the, how the wastewater was just decommissioned?
Yeah, we decommissioned. It's not like a project that still needs to be done, is it? Can you tell us?
No, when we originally started decommissioning of that wastewater plant, we had to, we had to de-water it, which all the water went into the new wastewater treatment plant, we had to pump it to the new wastewater treatment plant. Once the, once it was de-watered, we had to go in there and disinfect with lime all of the sludge and dry it out. And once, once all the sludge was dried out and limed, then we spread that back out, and then from that point, we were, the state signed off on it, and we were able to start backfilling it.
So the whole idea of brownfield, Suzanne, is to not only address any contamination that could be there, but the perception of contamination that could be there. So there are still questions that pop up when people talk about, I had a lady come up to me, and when she found out it was a sewer plant thing, she was just like, oh my God, we can't do anything on that. So if we do a brownfield grant, what it's going to do is reassess that, and again, write off on it and say, this is non-contaminated land, you can build what you want on it. So that's the idea of going ahead and having the brownfield done. If we have a grant that pays for all of it, it seems like a no-brainer that we should go ahead and do this. All right.
Okay, thank you.
Mary, I have one more question.
Yeah?
On the, the water report for January, I see that we had water input of 2.7 million gallons, and we had a water produced of 4.5, so that's almost a 2 million gallon spread. How, how do you account for that?
Sorry, I don't have the water report, right, right.
Well, I'll, I'll give it to you, it's on page, oh, I don't know, seven. Water produ, water, raw water into the plant, 2,762,470 gallons. Water produced, 4,524,810 gallons. It's, you know, 1.8 million gallon spread.
Travis, it's, it's because we have two, there's two meters that read for all of the springs, and one of the meters is down. So the water that's coming in from that spring wasn't accounted for. And then the other discrepancy is because of the 3 million gallons we have in storage between the 2 million gallon and the 1 million gallon, and we cycle through that water as we're, and, and that water's entering into the system.
Well, yeah, but that's not water produced. The, the spring not being measured is probably the answer, but I think the report should reflect those discrepancies.
It, it does say it in the area on the bottom in the notations, but unfortunately, when it published in this packet, it, I forgot to check a box that allowed legal and letter to be a mixed use, so it's on the next page, you have to actually put them side by side to read the report in its entirety. So I apologize for that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anything else from the board? Seeing none, all right, from the public, Steve Keenan, you are on.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Corinne, could you please expand a bit, when you're saying that if there's consolidation, you don't feel, you don't have any concerns? Am I hearing you correctly, that you don't have any concerns that the district might decide to close the Peonia School Buildings, please?
Sure, the school board tonight, actually, as we speak, is reviewing two options. One option would be keeping one high school between Hotchkiss and Peonia that would be located in Peonia. If that was the case, it would be located at the current Peonia Junior/Senior High School Building. And the other option is having the high school consolidated in Hotchkiss, and if that was to happen, the current Junior/Senior High School Building would become the Peonia Kindergarten through eighth grade, K-8 building, and the current elementary school would be repurposed and expanded for the North Fork School of Integrated Study.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, any other questions from the public? All right, seeing none, let's move on to the police report. Chief?
Hello. Police Department has nothing new to report this week.
Oh my goodness. All right, any questions for the chief from the board on his fabulous report? Yes, Michelle?
I just, could we get an update on the status of the new vehicle?
Yes, it's still sitting and waiting for materials. I got half my materials last week, and I'm waiting for the other half this week. It's a new company that I used, and probably will not be using again.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Yes, Nick?
Uh, yeah, chief, any update on the political signs or banners?
No, not at this time, there is, I've reached out and still had a lady call me and talk to me about how the First Amendment doesn't, or excludes certain items. Those certain items, I will be getting with town attorney and talking with them about those, but at this point, no, it's the same thing. We went and talked to him, he refused to do anything, and said that more than likely, potentially, there is going to be another one put up here shortly.
I'll believe me, there are two more of.
Is there?
Yeah, and they're as bad, if not worse, so. Okay, anything from the public for the chief? Yes, Steve Keenan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Could you please, either Police Chief Neil Ferguson or Madam Mayor, could you tell me what you're talking about, these political signs, please? I'm not familiar with it. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mary.
Oh, so on, about Third and Delta, there is a greenhouse that has several political signs on it with profanities on them, and that's what all the furor has been about. Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? All right, seeing none, let's move on with the attorney report. Beau? Oh, yes, Michelle, Michelle?
All right, there was a question that came up in the chat a second ago.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm not sure if that was for the police report or not.
Yeah, so Sharon Kind wants to ask a question about noise. Go ahead, Sharon.
Hey, you can hear me now, right? I'm at 227 North Fork Avenue, and I'd like to know the process of registering a disturbance complaint about the noise coming from the laundromat on Second Street. about the noise coming from the laundromat on Second Street. I'm directly behind there and this is a constant roar coming, I'm pretty sure, from the four dryer vents that come out of the top of the building. There's a curb in them, I think that might be the problem. As a customer, I went there and asked the owner if there was something that could be done about it. And she just said she couldn't hear it. So that was the end of that. And, um, now that winter came, my windows are closed. I've been able to tolerate it, but I know when the spring comes open, my windows is going to be, I'm not going to be able to handle it. So I just wanted to know how to maybe mitigate this thing.
Well, it's for any kind of complaint or anything, just get a hold of Delta County Dispatch at nine-seven-zero-eight-seven-four-two-zero-one-five whenever it's happening. And we can go out and take a look.
Okay, because previous owners, no, no problem with noises then. Okay, so I'll do that and see what we can do about it. Thank you.
Yep.
All right, anything else for the chief? All right, seeing none, let's move on to Beau and your report.
Good morning, good evening, everybody. So, sorry, it's been a day. Included in the packet is, is my report. A couple of things, I did receive an email from Corinne Ferguson with two questions in addition to the report. But, um, let me just kind of hit the highlights first and try to answer those questions along the way. With respect to the Riverbank subdivision application, we anticipate that this will move forward. With the Town Council or Board of Trustees having its hearing, the earliest would be the first meeting in April and included in the packet as a proposed dates and deadlines. We've explained, we being town staff, has explained to the applicant that, um, any kind of CO would be dependent upon the town water moratorium being, um, removed. So, um, the applicant's aware of the fact that while he could start the preliminary plat process and, and go through, um, the development, there's not going to be any CEOs issued until there's a, um, resolution with the town's water tap moratorium. So, uh, before I move on to the other, uh, items in the, um, report, is there any questions regarding the Riverbank subdivision application process?
Yeah, what's a CO, Beau?
Oh, excuse me, certificate of occupancy.
Oh, okay, thank you, all right. Did you have a question, Dave?
Uh, just quickly, so, um, Beau, is the assumption to be made that they do not have water taps that they purchased in advance?
Um, it's my understanding that's correct. Corinne, you can correct me if I'm wrong, so.
They own two.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, so included in the pack, it is.
One second, Beau, Michelle has a question.
I'm sorry, it wasn't a question. I just wanted to say thank you for the preliminary timeline on that. That's extremely helpful.
And I would actually thank Corinne because she, um, has the nuts and bolts of jamming all those deadlines together, so. Included in the packet is a draft accessory dwelling unit ordinance for the board to review. With that ordinance, there's a couple of questions that I would suggest that the board consider. Preliminary, I think that the ADU discussion kind of ties in well with if there's going to be a short-term rental regulation by the town. And if there is going to be a short-term rent, rental regulation by the town, does the town want to have any sort of limitation or restrictions on the use of ADUs for, uh, short-term rentals? So just consideration as you guys go through that. So then the next thing was the marijuana ordinance that the clerk, I mean, take a look at. I must say that I think that the committee did a really good job in putting this together. And my compliments to them, I didn't have really a whole lot, my red line was included in the packet.
And then I'm assuming we will discuss the whole signatures on letters when we get to that part of the agenda.
We can do that, yeah, at that point in time. But I did have that, um, information in the letters on the trustees', uh, section of the, the memo. And then the last aspect, um, that is not in my written report, but I've had conversations with the president of the Peony Ditch Company. And we're both respectively looking at our calendars for time that town staff and the Peony Ditch Company can discuss, uh, both the Grand Avenue project and any future projects, um, that may come about.
Okay, thank you, Beau. Did you have a question, Karen? About your muted, Karen, Karen, you're muted.
It was on the marijuana thing, but we can discuss that when we talk about the ordinance.
Okay.
It was on occupancy tax, yeah.
All right, Michelle.
Yeah, just one question. I know we're not looking at the Board of Adjustment or Board of Appeals ordinance tonight, but there was a suggestion at the joint meeting of the Planning Commission and the board to, um, to potentially look at a regional Board of Appeals along with the potential regional solution for the building inspector. So I'm just wondering how those two, you know, the ordinance that you're working on and the suggestion from the committee are, um, working together.
I guess I, I didn't, I, I wasn't at that meeting and so that suggestion hadn't been relayed to me. But one of the reasons that this has been slow-going is I do want to make sure, you know, if whoever we're working with, that the new building official, that they're on board with these concepts. Because frankly, we're going to be relying heavily on their enforcement and, and thought processes. So, um, I'm happy to visit with town staff with respect to that concept and, um, kind of bring it back to the board after we do it at the staff, uh, banter about at the staff level.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we have a hand up, the phone number, last four digits are eight-four-eight-four. Would you please, um, state your name and address when you speak, please? Do you still want to speak? Oh, there we go. Hold on. Can you unmute them, Corinne, or do they have to unmute themselves?
They were unmuted, but I think they've remuted themselves. I've asked them to unmute, but I don't have the ability to do it.
Okay, eight-four-eight-four, would you please unmute yourself if you want to speak? Okay, we're obviously having some logistical difficulties here. There we go. Can you please unmute yourself, eight-four-eight-four?
I believe you need to press star-nine.
All right. If you can, can you put your comment in the chat and we will get it since obviously we can't get you unmuted? And in the meantime, while you're doing that, we're going to go ahead and go to Skylar, who has a hand up?
Hello there, um, I have a question about the ADU piece of business and.
Oh, well, we're going to address that later on in the agenda and I would suggest that we do that at that time. Thank you.
Thank you.
And apologies, it, it may be star-six. I don't have the information in front of me. So eight-four-eight-four, if you try star-six on your telephone, that may unmute you.
Hello. Thank you. Yay, um, you know, that's not on the explanation in the front. It says, press star-nine on the phone and then it says on the, um, on the recording, it says, please wait for it to be unmuted. So if you guys could add the star-six, that would really be helpful in the town of Peonya where, where it explains how to get on these Zoom calls. It's not on there at all.
Great.
So, thank you, hello, everybody, it's Christina Patterson at Place Road. I, I kept pressing star-nine because star-six, yeah, anyway. Back to the Riverbank, um, information, is it still at, I just fundamentally, is it still at fifteen lots and they need thirteen water taps? And you mentioned that it's going back to the council in April, but you didn't say anything about when it's going to planning and zoning.
Yeah, so that information is in the, I, I just hit because we're at the trustee meeting, but that information is in the, um, uh, memo itself. And we'd be happy to get a copy of that to you.
Got it, okay. But it's, it's not changed radically since that first phone call where they're saying it was a minimal amount of plots. Is that right?
That's, that's correct. I want to, because it's not, we don't technically have a pending application. I don't want to peg the number of units, but, um, it's, um, between seven and fifteen, so.
Got it, thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Christina. All right, Suzanne.
I, I was, I was just going to, um, offer the advice that you, Corinne, figured out. Let people verbally know what the process is to unmute yourself. But you've, you got it, so thanks.
All right, thank you. All right, anything else for the attorney? All right, seeing none, let's move on to treasurer's report. Mr. King, you are up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We've reviewed disbursements with the Finance and Personnel Committee and recommend approval. I have been working at the direction, from the direction from the board on the DMEA franchise fee issue and we will report to that under regular business. I conclude my report.
Thank you, any questions for Mr. King? Seeing none, anything from the public? All right, seeing none, let's go on to, uh, the Finance Director's report. Cindy, do you have anything you want to add to your written report?
There was a couple of questions.
Oh, we can't hear you. Cindy?
She was having a little bit of difficulty earlier with her sound, so she may be trying to address that.
Okay. Well, do we want to move on to disbursements then and then we'll come back to Cindy?
Okay.
Okay, now let's go on to disbursements. Can we have a motion for disbursements, please? Yes.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve accounts payable for twenty-two-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirty-one dollars and forty-nine cents, payroll taxes of sixteen-thousand-four-hundred-ninety-two dollars and ninety-two cents, and a payroll direct deposit of twenty-one-thousand-two-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars and fifty-five cents. This is my third time to try this motion. I think I might have gotten it right this time.
Well, we'll check, Karen, did you get it right?
Perfect, perfect.
Can we have a second? Karen, second.
I'll second that.
All right. Questions on the disbursement? Yes, Michelle.
Yeah, more a comment than a question. I was just looking it over and it looks like we're paying about four-hundred dollars a month for our utility billing postcards. And if I'm right, on our provider, which is Mail Services LLC, I think they do offer electronic billing and online payments as, uh, as a package through their service. So I wonder if there might be a cost savings if we look into that, maybe getting e-statements and then consolidating from two separate providers for online payments and physical bills into a, a single provider for that.
I can look into it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on disbursements? All right, seeing none, anything from the public? All right, seeing none, we have a motion in a second to accept disbursements, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Impose? All right, that motion carries. Cindy, are you there and can we try you one more time?
She's still having some trouble, so, um, I'm going to try to answer any questions that you, you might have. Before we go into the written report, there were a couple of questions that were asked, um, direct to me. So I did want to let the board know that, um, let me see here. We were adding a clarification to what we mean by the incomplete year-end process and that's just finalizing all of the end-of-year numbers for 2020. It's not complete yet because we still are waiting for receipt of a few final invoices and confirming, um, that we've included the inventory and all of the fixed assets correctly. And then that will be finalized. It usually is done, um, in March. The other was a question about the sales tax. So included in the report was a updated sales tax report and the number in the 2021 is annualized out. If we were to continue receiving the amount of sales tax we did, where we would be at the end of the year. So we don't think that, we've only received one month so far for this year because we're always a month or two behind. So we'll keep providing those updates and can address any potential modifications that might be, need, need to be made if they come up. And then, other than that, if there was any specific questions for the report, I can do my best to answer.
All right, questions on Cindy's report? Okay, seeing none, anything from the public? All right, seeing none, thank you. Let's move on to regular business. Treasurer and Town Attorney update DME franchise fee slash sale. Beau or Ross, which one would like to?
Madam Mayor, this is Ross.
Okay.
Per the board's instruction, uh, I have communicated with the town attorney and also sought comment from our town auditor. I'd like to make a little preamble here and say that I am not an attorney or an accountant. I do have thirty-five years of experiences at, at, either personally or the acting lead negotiator for franchises in Colorado and Wyoming with both home rule and statutory communities. I was a employee of Public Service Company of Colorado, New Century Energies, and ultimately, Excel Energy. And I was either a division-level manager or vice president. The issue with the franchise fees not being a cost of doing business, therefore being a business expense and subject to sales taxes and included in gross revenues was never a discussion item in any franchise negotiations I participated in. In speaking with the, the representatives from DMEA and their, their interpretation was the same. And in the discussions with the auditor, their interpretation was the same. I intend to remain with our, my original recommendation, no further action. I would point out that the, the board wishes to pursue other considerations. There are some issues that relate to other franchisees in the community to include Black Hills Energy Spectrum Cable and Elevate Fiber in the county of Delta. And I'd be happy to elaborate on those if anybody so desires. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Nerland for his comments.
Thank you, Mr. King. Yeah, I would echo what, um, Mr. King had put forth. I had an opportunity to take a look at the two-thousand-and-one, um, franchise agreement that's in place with DMEA. The definition that's in place is gross revenue. And there's nothing further defining gross revenue, both under the franchise agreement. And I didn't see anything under the public utility statute either. There is a, um, two-thousand, excuse me, a nineteen-eighty-three case, um, brought forth where it was recognized that, um, gross revenue can include franchise agreements, uh, excuse me, can include, uh, franchise payments. So, um, all of this being said, I, I think that, um, it's actually very timely because the agreement is a two-thousand-and-one agreement and it has a twenty-year term. So, um, this has prompted me, um, to kind of reach out with Corinne and say, hey, we, we need to reach out to DMEA and get this franchise agreement updated. And that's usually, frankly, a, a six-week plus or minus. usually frankly, a, a six-week plus or minus process. And with that, to the extent that the board wanted to give us some direction with respect to further defining gross revenue um, in this agreement, we'd be happy to do it. Um, I was providing an email today from Ms. Ferguson that um, I believe was from Ms. Watson uh, from the city of Fruta, uh, town of Fruta, that um, had a gross revenue definition that did not include franchise agreement, uh, franchise fees as a component of that. So um, I don't recall who the provider was, but it could be something that would be subject to negotiation.
Hey, thank you. Any questions from the board? Yes, Bill?
So as we go along and renegotiate our franchise fee with DMEA, are we gonna have a chance to have that discussion?
Yeah, I mean, I would take the direction from the board, but um, you know, I've, I've always found, just in prior dealings with other municipalities in DMEA, um, or other franchisees, they at least are willing to have, you know, reasonable discussions with respect to, you know, the amount of the fee. I don't know, and I haven't breached the conversation in terms of what sort of accounting headache that would provide on their end. So I, I couldn't answer that.
Well, I'm not concerned about what their problem is. I'm concerned about the fact that we're charging a sales tax on a fee. Uh, so it doesn't sound like Mr. King or you are willing to go forward with changing that at this time. But I think that is a discussion that the board ought to have when it comes time to renegotiate our franchise fee.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Any other comments, questions?
Madam Mayor, I would just like to say that I've discussed this with Mr. Nerlin, and I am in full support of his approach to dealing with this issue.
Okay, thank you. All right. Anything from the public? Yes, Suzanne?
Um, yes. So it's not just the contract you write with DMEA because contracts don't make law. Our ordinances are the law. And this town has the perfect right, um, like Fruta, um, to write a definition of gross revenue into our ordinance, which might read as um, gross revenue means any revenue as determined in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles received by the grantee from the operation of the system to provide services in the service area, provided however that such phrase does not include any taxes, fees, or assessments collected um, by the grantee from the subscribers. And it goes on to saying franchise fees may be passed through to subscribers as a line item on the subscriber's bill. And that's exactly what DMEA is doing to us. It's what um, our ordinance has authorized them to do without being as um, as clear as, this is essentially what our ordinance allows them to do. It's not an expense that DMEA incurs. It's one hundred percent borne by the public, and it's really unfair to charge the sales tax on top of that fee. And um, another thing that's disingenuous is your budget. If you read the budget, it calls the franchise, it doesn't say franchise fee. It says franchise taxes. So you even acknowledge in your budget that they're actually a tax. And you cannot tax a tax. It's not fair. And I think it's the board's responsibility um, to make sure that what we're doing and what we're charging to the people of this town is fair. Um, you know, it, it's just the right thing to do. It really makes a lot of sense. And I hope you can um, rewrite the ordinance to put a definition in there of what gross revenue means. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Suzanne. Anyone else? All right. Seeing none. Let's move on to item number five, twenty-twenty sanitary survey. Oh, I'm sorry, Michelle. I looked down too fast. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I just wanted to make sure I was understanding that we, we do expect to renegotiate the franchise fee with DMEA sometime this year because of the expiration on that, and that we could revisit the issue of our definition of gross revenue at that time. Is that the recommendation?
That, that is my recommendation. Thank you for putting that um, succinctly. Um, unfortunately, with these twenty-year terms, um, you know, it's sometimes these, the franchisees' agreements are written in such a way that they have an, an automatic extension, and the franchisee can't just terminate kind of upon the expiration. But um, it, it's just timely. So I think that we will reach out to DMEA and say, hey, we've got this um, agreement, so we want to initiate those discussions. And, and I, I'm just seeing kind of from the shake of heads and from the direction that we've received previously that we'd like to look at the definition of gross revenue and the application of the franchise fee, so.
Okay, thank you. Anything else before I look down? Nope. Okay. Moving on. Twenty-twenty sanitary survey update number four. Everything was in the packet unless somebody needs to explain this. Do we have any questions from the board about the sanitary survey at this point? Hmm, seeing none. Okay. Anything from the public? Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much for including this in the packet. I think we have just two small things to finish, and then we are complete on that. Another thing checked off the list. All right, let's move on to Public Works Capital Equipment Acquisition. A skid steer, broom, water tank, and faucet, or nozzle.
Okay, I'll start off, and then I'll probably tag Travis in. Um, but included in the uh, packet were the four bids that were received on this attachment to the skid steer. Um, this will fit our new skid steer and the skid steer that we still have in rotation. Um, so we would be able to use it on either piece of equipment. If one is being uh, maintenance, we can use it on the other. Um, we do not own any comparable equipment, um, other than our actual street sweeper. That's the most comparable um, item we would have that would be able to somewhat provide the same function. Um, and we anticipate that this would be very frequently used. Um, we don't run the street sweeper in the winter months, uh, and um, it's also a very large piece of equipment, and it's pretty cumbersome. And with this attachment, we can get into tighter spaces and um, use it a lot more often to do some simple street cleanup. Um, like you're witnessing right now with our warm-up and our thaw, we've got a lot of residual sand and things on the streets from sanding and salting the snow. Um, and this tool would be something we can very quickly uh, put on the skid steer to get out and use to do some street cleanup on a pretty consistent basis. Um, as, uh, and if there's any specific questions about the equipment itself, I'll leave those for Travis.
Okay. Do we have questions from the board on this equipment? Yes, Bill?
I just had one. What, which one were you recommending?
Um, the, the Bobcat, the John Deere, and the um, the Varner equipment. All of those are eighty-four inch brooms. The one from Hanan is a ninety-six inch broom. Um, they all have water attachments to it, so to suppress the dust. Um, the ninety-six would be really nice, but I couldn't find any other um, bits for a ninety-six inch broom, so I had to compare it to the eighty-four.
Well, on the ninety-six inch broom, uh, it's quite a bit bigger. It's another foot, foot uh, more. Uh, is your machine capable of handling it?
Yes, that, that, that is actually the one um, John Deere recommends for the machine, the machines that we have.
Good.
Okay. Any other questions for Travis or Corinne on this? Yes, Michelle?
Yeah, semi-related question. Um, I know that we do have one older skid steer that we're planning to auction off. When we talked about it last, it had over twelve thousand hours on it. Um, do we have any expectation of what, what we think the sale price might be when we get to that auction? Basically, I'm asking, will it offset some of the cost of this, or do we not expect much because of the age?
I, I would just, unless something goes funny and stuff, I would suggest that that machine will go well past what this one is, what the purchase price of any of these are.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? All right. Can we get a motion to buy, I guess, the Hanan equipment? Skid steer, is that the one that you recommended, Travis? Is that tonight?
That's, that's the one I would like.
Okay, yes, Karen. You're muted.
Is that, is that a larger brush? Still going to be able to get into smaller? I mean, that was one of the, one of the selling points was that we could get into smaller spaces with this skid steer?
Yes, it, it will still be able to get into all our tight spots that we need to.
Okay.
Yes, Bill?
I make a motion that we uh, purchase the Hanan equipment brush for ninety-eight seventeen.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Any further discussion from the board? Okay, seeing none. Anything from the public? Okay, seeing none. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that motion passes. All right, moving on.
Thank you.
You are welcome, Travis. Well, don't go away. Next item on the agenda is demolition and removal of decommissioned half-million gallon water storage tank.
This is... Sorry, Bill.
No, no, go ahead. Go ahead.
This has been a project that um, has been in the, has been recommended for the last quite a few years to um, de-commission the ha, old half-million gallon reservoir. Um, it's an old concrete tank. It sits up on Crest Haven Road. Um, that, it's a half-a-million gallons worth of water storage, but only two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand gallons of usable water storage from where the outlets were at. Um, when we first started our big water project six, five or six years ago, we looked at re-lining it, and the, the effectiveness of re-lining it and um, put, trying to put it back in service was too expensive. It wasn't cost-effective to get another two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand gallons of water storage. So that was why we, I was trying to get it demolished and we could reclaim the ground and, and use the site later down the road for something else, or even above ground storage down the road.
Okay. Thank you. Questions? Yes, Bill?
You know, I, I would be in favor of this project because I think it's a piece of, it's a loose end that the town needs to clean up. However, I am uh, a little bit hesitant to go forward with it, uh, given the discussion that we had on our budget season concerning our, our water uh, reserve funds. And uh, I, I think that at that time, we felt it was vital that we build up our water reserve funds. In fact, we, you know, we had an additional burden on everybody to pay more money. Uh, and before I was to go forward with this, I'd like to know where we're at on our water reserve funds, and how much we're putting towards that every month. Uh, and so to see if we really need to do this project.
Yes. Kenny?
Yeah, I'd like to add too that um, this is uh, one of the requirements on the sanitary survey, and that requirement has been completed, which is a twelve-inch cap. To fully, let's see, from Wind Water Works to fully disconnect and cap abandoned tank. That has been completed. So um, it, it seems to me that there is, while it is something with, the town would like to get done in the future, sometime in the near future, it doesn't seem like, it seems like it's one of those important but not urgent items.
Yes, Corinne.
So, um, in order to get the information and answer that question, we would, I would need to take a look at the budget and talk with Cindy and um, what our income is. And I'm unfortunately not able to do that at the moment while we're in the meeting. So if I could request the board um, table the conversation to the next meeting, then we can gather that information uh, and bring it back to the board to make a final decision.
Can I get a motion and to table?
There, my motion, my move that we table this uh, item until we get further information, hopefully by the next meeting.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Michelle, did you say something?
Yeah, just another question, and this, this is my ignorance on how the water tanks work. But if we were to use it for uh, backup raw water storage, does that still need to be a lined tank, or could we use it as, as, if, if it's going to be treated after?
That, that tank leaked over four million gallons a month.
Okay, so it wouldn't need to be aligned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any comment from the public?
There was one comment.
From Jer saying this does not look like a priority. All right. Motion and second. All in favor of tabling this item till the next meeting?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that motion passes. All right. Next item on the agenda is the discussion of a policy regarding signing letters of support or opposition. Beau, you want to summarize what you already wrote for us?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. So included in my memo was um, a little bit of an analysis that I did with respect to the issue that's presented itself um, from a couple of trustees in terms of their ability to execute a lever, um, using, executing a letter using the title trustee. Um, and, and frankly, um, I've done um, more ra, research on this than I anticipated. Um, it's, it's a bit of a difficult issue in terms of balancing a trustee's speech and First Amendment rights versus um, the limitations that are in place, both under your trustee code of conduct, um, the statutory limitations, and then coupled with that is uh, making sure that there's a nuance or a distinguish between uh, speaking as an individual versus speaking, speaking on behalf of the town. So ultimately, I'm, I'm of the conclusion that um, it, and, and I would start all of this with the recommendation that, and I know this current board is extremely prudent and, and cautious, but I would caution all trustees that um, you know, to the extent that you're requested to execute um, a document um, and use your title as trustee, I think that you can do that. I, you can do that, provided um, it's not an incident where you're speaking on behalf of the town, or there's a perception that you're speaking on behalf of the town. Um, and so uh, so for long, as that's the case, um, your First Amendment right trumps any sort of limitation that would come into play um, based on um, your role as a trustee. Now, that being said, the nuance and the distinguishing factor needs to be that if you execute something using the title trustee, it can't be perceived or should not be perceived that you're speaking. Um, it should be a title and not a distinguishing factor that you're speaking on behalf of the town. Um, and if it's an issue that you think may come before the town, I would highly urge you to not execute any letter, um, because it could then subsequently be perceived that you've made a statement that um, the full board was gonna weigh on at a later date. So that was a, a lot, but um, any questions from the analysis provided in the, in the memo?
Okay, questions for both? Yes, Michelle?
Yeah, that all makes perfect sense. I, I wonder how you feel about um, adding a disclaimer. I know there are some cases where it's a, a letter where, where all you can do is put a signature and, and that's it. But if it's a letter written by a trustee and they want to put that title, just adding something like, the views are my own and do not represent the position of the town, does that?
Yeah, I don't think that, I, I, I mean, I personally would love that and recommend that. I don't think that it should be something that the board should adopt as a policy because, again, I think it could be perceived uh, by the remainder of the trustees that that's a limitation on speech, so.
Dave?
Yeah, I just want to be clear because this came up um, when there was a request for us as individual trustees. Yeah, I just want to be clear because this came up when there was a request for us as individual trustees to sign on to a letter about an environmental issue to the Biden administration, incoming Biden administration. It was about one of the Wilderness Acts. And so the request was to ask individual elected officials if they would be as an individual willing to sign on. So there was a list of this person, their position and the town or jurisdiction that they came from. So that's what it arose, that's what arose, that's what brought this issue to the forefront in my mind. Because I wanted to sign the letter, Dave Knutson, trustee, Town of Peonia. I can't put a disclaimer in there. There isn't room for that. They just say name and that thing. So in that case, I'm joining a bunch of other elected officials. So I don't think it can be misinterpreted as a position of the Town of Peonia. But I think it's, it is prudent, as Bo mentioned, that if I write a letter to the editor, I think it's a courtesy to the other trustees and shows respect that this is my own opinion and not necessarily representing the Town of Peonia. And I just think that's a wise thing to do and that's the practice that I plan on engaging in. So thanks for all the research, Bo. I know that wasn't an easy one. There's a lot of nuances on this. But that, that's what brought it about, thanks.
Well, I know we have a good board now with a good head on its shoulders, but I think that this is something, I wouldn't necessarily recommend that we develop a policy on this, but it just can be a component of board training in the future so that we make sure that we're distinguishing the personal view from the political town view, if you will.
Thank you. Yeah, my, my concern was the same as Dave's. And I think I finally did sign the letter as a private citizen versus mayor because there was no way to assure that I was speaking only for myself. And so I put my title on and I probably continue to do that in the future if I sign things. So. Any other questions for Bo? Okay, seeing none. Anything from the public? Okay, seeing none. Let's move on and thank you so much for your work on this, Bo. Much appreciated.
Thank you guys for the understanding on kind of working through it.
Okay, all right, next on the agenda is ordinance twenty twenty-one to be determined establishing marijuana regulations.
Okay, so I'll kick it off. In the packet was included an agenda summary form that just really gave a cursory outline of what the working group discussed and some of the questions and recommendations that were made. I again, just want to publicly thank Jer Lowe, Dale Cecil, Tom Jacobs and Tom Scudder for joining myself and the chief to tear through this, talk through a lot of different options and ideas and bring back some thoughts and suggestions to the board for review. So the draft version that was included in the packet does include the red lines and comments and so we did that so that the board can have a visual of what still needs to be addressed and answered. At which point we can then implement those modifications to the draft ordinance and bring that back for the potentially second and final read at the next board meeting. With that, I don't know if anyone in the advisory board would like to say anything just as an introduction to the board before we get into the ordinance, but I would love to provide them that opportunity if they'd like to.
Okay, does anyone from the advisory board like to say something?
Sorry.
Advisory committee, whatever? I see no hands. Yep, there's a hand. Jer? Where'd he go?
He's there, he's just not unmuted. Star six, Jer?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I just want to know if anybody has any questions about anything that they've gone over? Yeah, Karen?
On section six dash four dash one thirty and one forty, they're talking about transfers of licenses and they say do it according to the state things. Well, I don't know what the state things are and that's what my question is. What is the state transfer? I mean, does it have to be with the sale of the business or?
No, it does not actually, and this is a point that I I did some research on, you know, I'm pretty well connected to the community, so I hear the word on the street, if you will, and so what a lot of people might do, let me just back up for a second and start by saying that you only get to be the Town of Peonia opening up for dispensaries one time. Okay, you only get to do that once. And there's not, this is a very deep subject, but you're going to make the bulkier money for the town off of fees. And a lot of that will be people trying to get a license right off the bat. Some people would come in and just try to buy that license and then turn around and they pay you five thousand dollars for it, but they might turn around and try to sell it for a hundred thousand dollars without ever even opening a business. That's nonsense. As a businessman myself, you sell your business based upon the equity that is in your business and the equity you've built over time by building that business to make it have value. And I recommended that there is no transfership of license that anybody who wants to come in and buy a business because it was equitable can do so, but first they have to go back to the town and apply for the license. So that you don't get a bunch of characters that just want to come in, buy a license and then turn around and sell it.
So, so are you suggesting that, that if a person was selling their business, they can't sell the license?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, so the, the new buyer has to go to this town and get a new license and then buy the guy's business?
That is correct. The, 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 the prospector should go to the town and say, I'm interested in buying this business. I'd like to apply for the license.
And they have to go through the state first.
Go through all that and then if that all passes muster, then they can complete the sale.
Now, is that what the state says? Is that, because in this ordinance, it just says we're going to go by the state statutes?
Well, the state doesn't have a position on that really. Corinne?
A transfer of license with a new owner would have to be approved and vetted by the town as well as the state.
Yes.
State says that, okay.
But again, it doesn't mean that the license is automatically transferable. They just
They have to
whether they have to buy a new license for that business or we're going to allow them to transfer a license just the way a liquor establishment can transfer their license to the new owner.
Correct. The process would be the same, similar to a liquor license transfer.
Unless we decide we don't want to do that. Michelle?
Yeah, I think it makes sense to mirror our liquor license requirements as much as we can. But I think whether a license can be transferred and still requires review or whether we don't allow a transfer and they have to buy a new one might depend on how much work is involved for staff in the process of reviewing all of that information, whether it's a transfer, whether it's a new purchase is, you know, if, I wouldn't, I wouldn't like to see a transfer with no additional fees paid to the town if it's going to take hundreds of hours of townwork to review that new business owner.
So those fees would be fees that were outlined in the resolution, where it outlines all the fees and a liquor license transfer is almost exactly the same process as a new application for a liquor license. And the fees are almost identical and it would be my recommendation that it be the same for a marijuana license.
Okay, and yeah, in that case, I support your recommendation. Thank you.
Okay, so the wording we have here in the draft is, is okay, is what you're saying?
That was what the town attorney stated, yes.
Okay.
Kami, did I see your hand up? No, okay, Bill?
A comment on six dash forty dash forty, paragraph C. It seems to say that our authority to grant, deny a license, revoke or suspend a license or not renew a license shall be a final decision. And then it may be appealed to the district court. So that's kind of in conflict. Are we, are we the final say or is the district court the final say?
So, yep.
Yeah, we, we are, we are the final say until we're not. So in essence, what we're, what we're saying is that you will exhaust your, all of your administrative remedies through the town. And then subsequent to that, just with any decision that the town makes with respect to a public hearing, which this would be, the applicant can file a Rule one oh six challenge. So if somebody's denied a subdivision zoning or any sort of kind of development application or on this licensure, that would be their remedy and it'd be their remedy whether it was in the ordinance or not, because that's state law. But we're just explicitly putting it there so that they're aware of what's available.
Okay, and another general comment. We're looking for the, our language in the language in the ballot measure seem to imply that we're talking about a retail marijuana or marijuana, marijuana, medical marijuana store. Are we anticipating any more than that?
The invitation from the voter was, voter approval was retail and medical marijuana sales.
Okay, so nothing to do with the manufacturing or the, or the growing? Okay. So should we, should we make, change the retail marijuana establishment to retail marijuana store throughout the document?
No.
Make that clear?
No, that's the consistency with the language that's used at the, in the code and at the state level.
Okay, and then secondly, are any of these anticipated stores going to be subject to zoning and planning, planning and zoning area?
Yes.
No.
Don't they all, doesn't planning and zone have to say where they can be?
No. The board outlined the, the commercial areas, it's in the ordinance.
So that's
Just like a liquor license, it can only be in the core commercial and liquor licenses cannot be within five hundred feet of a school or place of an education for a little bit more to it than that, but basically schools. And so that's the same, the way it's drafted and this is the same.
So, okay, so there's, it's not intended that the, the zoning commission would, would outline a separate thing for marijuana?
No.
Okay.
But they are zoning and planning laws, right?
Yeah, well, I think what, to your question, Bill, is that there's already the predetermined zones that were put forth here. But then to answer it, it's not going to be subject to additional review unless there's a change in the ordinance.
But all the zoning and planning rules will apply?
Yeah, I mean, all of the kind of building code and everything else would, would apply, so.
Speaking, I'm sorry, one more. Speaking of the zoning, this refers to signs, as we're talking about signs on marijuana buildings, et cetera. And they all say there, those signs are according to the zoning laws. So I, I, it's another indication that I think ours, our sign thing that's in the building code does belong in the zoning section. I agree with Suzanne on that.
And our zoning and land use laws don't anticipate marijuana. Do we need to modify the planning and zoning areas to include this anticipated use?
No, I don't believe so, and I did have this ordinance reviewed by the Marijuana Enforcement Division in Grand Junction who had no concerns and confirmed that all the language included in there regarding the state requirements for signage and everything is the most current, up to date and required under the marijuana enforcement rule.
Okay.
Kami, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I guess I'm just wondering, sometimes people request rezoning. Would this not be allowed with any kind of marijuana establishment?
I, I would say that if someone was requesting to be rezoned in a zone that was not permitted, that that would be a variance request and as part of that, I mean, we really need to look at that, but that would be a subject to review. That would have to go and be reviewed and, yeah, Bo wants to add.
Yeah, so anybody can upzone, if you will. So potentially somebody could upzone into the appropriate commercial district and then look to apply for a license. Typically, when they initiate that process, the town will inquire at the staff level or the planning commission will inquire at the planning review in terms of what the intended use is. And so that could give an indication in terms of what the applicant's plan are, or the plans would be, but in theory, yes, somebody could upzone into the zone district that would allow for a marijuana license. But that, as, as the board knows, that it's his own public process that would be involved with it.
Right, and the same would be a public process if someone already established in a approved zone and then tried to rezone and keep their business and trying to rezone into a zone that didn't permit it. That would also have to be a public process.
Yes, Nick?
Yeah, I have just a couple of housekeeping issues here. Six dash four dash eighty, item A point one and two, those need to be indented. As, as do six dash four dash one hundred items, what D one, two and three, and there's a few others within the, within the document, but also six dash four dash one hundred, item F, the last paragraph, then you need to strike of the, it should read retail marijuana store shall only be operated within the boundaries of a C one or C two commercial zone district as those boundaries exist at the time instead of what it has in there. Few extra words in there. Okay?
Okay.
Okay, anyone else? Michelle?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. First, we had talked previously about having a limitation on the number of shops or the number of shops within a certain area, and I don't see that at all in this version of the ordinance, so I just wanted to get a sense of why the committee didn't include that and if it's something that we want to put back in.
Jer? Corinne, do you want to go and then let Jer?
Um, we'll go ahead and hear what Jer has to say and then I'd really like to, if we could, start at the beginning and go through the ordinance. So we can actually look at the questions and areas that were, that were marked, so we can make sure we don't miss anything.
Okay, all right, Jer, you're on.
This, this came up so many times about how many shops we should allow. It's, it's a really tough scenario when it comes down to it. I am of the opinion that as I may have mentioned before, you only get one shot at application fees. I'm of the opinion, let as many people apply as they want and if they can pass muster and they can buy a property and try to make a business out of it, then good for them. I will tell you that at the end of the day, you're only going to have one or two that survive. Like, that is pretty, that's going to be a market-based function. And at the end of the day, only one or two, maximum of three, ever would survive in a town this size. And there's a lot of other things that we need to talk about after this ordinance is passed. But you just need to start getting people, but as far as the way the town makes money off this, we need to talk about that. I don't know that we need to get into it in this meeting, but I would allow as many people to apply and give it their best as you possibly can, and the market is certainly going to sort it out down to one or two, I believe.
So, in addition to that, again, a lot of this was, it was discussed a lot. Overall, the consensus from the community working group members was that they didn't think that more than a couple would actually be a thriving business in our community in the area. The available space is pretty landlocked in our C1, C2, so that would limit how many would be able to find a location that they could convert and put in all the required equipment to have a running shop. And the other thing was, again, trying not to single out one type of business with extra regulations and rules that we don't have for others, and so there is no limitation on the amount of liquor licenses that can be applied for and come before the board. And so the overall consensus of the majority was to not list a limitation within the ordinance.
Dave, did you have your hand up?
I'll just wait till we go through page by page.
Okay, well then, why don't we go ahead and do that? Is, let's go back up to... All right. I'm assuming nobody has an issue with page one, or page two. So that would be fifty and fifty-one in the packet. Are there any issues with page fifty-two in the packet? Yes, Dave?
Just, do we have to backdate it to December 31st? I mean, isn't it just the day it's passed?
What, what do you mean?
On six forty thirty, it says this article shall be effective midnight, December 31st, 2020. Well, it's backdating, and we haven't even passed it.
I believe we included the date that the town, that that's when it became eligible. Bo?
Yeah, I think it's a fair point. It's after midnight, but, you know, we should probably just, once it's introduced and then set for second reading, we should just have it updated with respect to that.
Okay, anything else? All right, we're on to page fifty-three in the packet. Any comments? Okay, page fifty-four in the packet. Six four sixty to six four eighty, beginning. Okay, seeing none. Page fifty-five in the packet. Yes, Dave?
I just have friends that are very sensitive to pronouns, and there's a his/her, it might be better to say their. This is on paragraph one under A.
Okay.
All right, anything else? Yes?
Just real quickly, if we were to limit the number of shops, where would it go in this document? Because I'll tell you what I'm concerned about, is this Wild West thing where there's all this activity of conversion of things, and it boils down to three. I don't see why we wouldn't just set it at three, if that's kind of a thing, and let people have viable businesses rather than scrambling, and everyone trying to eke a living, and there's too much, too many people trying to eke a living out here. And that's what I'm concerned about, by just opening it up Wild West, and let anyone who wants to come in here open up a shop. So I'm personally not in favor of just saying, let the market determine this. I'd rather see people that are committed, very few licenses, and work it that way. So I don't agree with the previous decision. That's just my own, my own opinion, and not the opinion of the board of the town of Peonya.
Okay, Tammy?
So I would see that in six four ninety, probably where you'd put forth that limitation to the extent that the board wanted to do it, six four ninety or six four one hundred.
Tammy?
Is that limit of retail, or medical, or limited free of each? So I think it's something we need to think about. We're dealing with two different types of stores here, so let's not forget that.
Well, and to add a little bit of clarification with that, the state has changed their way of handling that as well, and you can open a shop that is a dual shop. And so that was a lot of conversation that we had as well, that there should be some kind, some type of inclusion, specifying that there would be, that there has to be a medicinal use shop as well. All the licenses couldn't go to commercial only, retail only.
Yes, Nick?
This is where I mentioned, one and two should be indented as well.
Okay, thank you. So as long as we're on six four ninety, and this would be the place to put that. Do you want to make a motion to put that in there, Dave?
Sure, at the risk of it being defeated, I'd like to, the following motion, that we allow no more than three recreational marijuana shops, and no more than a total of five recreational and medicinal shops, or six, let's say six.
Okay.
Trying to be clear here, so we could have three medical marijuana shops, we could have three recreational marijuana shops. Or any combination, to have a maximum of six shops.
Okay. Do we have a second on that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, discussion? Yes, Michelle?
I would prefer to see, I agree with the idea of a limit, I think that's a good idea, but I would prefer a limit that's population-based, which allows us a little more freedom to grow over time. So I would, I would support your motion with the modification that somehow references our current population. So no more than three to six per, for the population we have now, with... So if the population doubles, potentially the number of stores could double.
So, let me add, based on, these numbers are based on a population of fifteen hundred. If the population, the ratio will change at the same level based on future population increases. Does that meet what you're looking for, Michelle?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so I'm assuming you're amending your motion?
Correct.
Okay, Nick, do you agree with the amendment?
Yes.
Okay. Tammy, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I'm just thinking, couldn't you, if the population did double, couldn't you just change this? I mean, at that point, that would, we may all be, many of us gone by then, but just thinking, other boards could handle something like that in the future, if we were just going to stick with three and three. Just a thought.
Okay. Karen?
I think six is too many. But, you know, but I would, I would, I would support the motion to put a limit, yes.
Okay, Bill?
I'm just going to make a general comment, that six licenses in a C1 and C2 district in Peonya has the ability to basically gut Main Street. You put six marijuana businesses on Main Street, what are you going to have left? Just want to point that out to people.
Well, we could do industrial zone, upgrade it to commercial too, so we do have some industrial zones. Yes, Michelle?
Yeah, I think Bill makes an excellent point with that, and we had previously talked about restrictions, so many shops per block as well, so that might be another way to look at it.
Yes.
Okay. All right. So, any further discussion?
There. I had one comment back on, I got to find it now, but it's on page fifty-five.
Yeah.
The very first paragraph.
Well, Bill, let's deal with this section about doing the shops, the number of shops, because it's going to go in six four ninety, and then we can go back and hit your thing on.
All right, that sounds good.
Okay, well, my personal opinion is, I think we shouldn't have a limit. I think the market will work itself out. I personally can't see, you know, six people coming in here to begin with, to do this. And, yeah, that's just my personal opinion, and unless you guys go three and three, I don't get a say. So, Bill?
Well, I just want to point out, you know, we saw what the hemp industry did when it came in. A lot of people went into business, and took up a lot of farmland, took it out of farming business, made a big splash. The first year of doing that eliminated a lot of producers, but the farms were able to return to normal agriculture. In the town, you take a bunch of stores, you buy out the businesses that are there, because that's what they'll have to do, and then they don't make it, we're going to be left with empty storefronts.
We currently have empty storefronts, so you could probably get, how many empty storefronts do we have? You probably could fill them all with marijuana shops at this point. Okay, Michelle?
Yeah, one other option to throw out there. Rather than a strict limit on the number of shops, or where they can go, what if we only accepted so many applications at a time? And those applications would have to be fully processed before we considered anymore. So, basically, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have an application in unless there was a storefront open and available for that shop, is what I'm thinking.
Well, and they have to have the shop before they can do the license too. Yeah, Dave?
This is a question for our attorney, but it seems that if we try to take that approach, someone could come back and say, hey, you have nothing in your ordinance that limits, that allows you to limit applications, and you're limiting my application, so.
So, maybe not along that line, but I do fear that that situation could present itself where it gives credence to an applicant saying that the town is making a selective choice with respect to those applications that are appropriate. And my preference would be that we just kind of get parameters in place, and have an operation within those parameters versus creating a situation where there's a more in-depth town review at that level.
So what would those parameters be, Bo?
Well, I guess, my fear is, if somebody comes, my fear is if we're legislating whether or not an application is kind of deemed complete or not. If somebody's coming in saying, look, I've submitted all of my paperwork, I, you know, I identified a site that could come online, and we're saying, well, you have an option to lease, but you're not under lease, kind of whatever it might be. I don't, I don't know if we want to create another layer, both at the staff level, and then kind of for a review process, in terms of if somebody gets more of an argument, that they're saying we're being arbitrary with our decision.
Okay, I'm still confused, but I'm often confused. Okay, anything else from the board on the shops limit? Because right now, what we have is three medicinal, three recreational, or a total of six. That is tied to the population, or is in a ratio of the population. Does everybody understand? Yeah, Dave?
Just to clarify, the six are based on a population of fifteen hundred, and as the population increases, the number of shops would also increase at the same proportion.
Okay.
I hope that doesn't confuse people.
Okay, Karen?
How about the number of shops may be increased by a resolution of the board?
Michelle?
Yeah.
I like it.
Okay, do you agree, Nick, since we're amending the thing again?
I do.
Okay. Anything else from the board? All right, seeing none. Jer?
So I actually personally agree, personally agree with Dave and Bill. The thing is, is as I was saying, you only get to, I don't think you guys are understanding how the town is actually going to make money here. But, there is not a prob, it's not hard to get pot in Peonya, Colorado. Okay, that is a fact. So, the way the town makes money is through taxes and fees. And I am all about the town making money, because I drive through this town, and it's tearing my equipment up. I want to see the pot for pottles be successful, all right? The way you make money is by taking applications, and processing them, and charging the application fees, and then getting the tax collection. And as I said, the market will sort itself out. Six shops for fifteen hundred people is not even realistic. That's never going to happen. I don't care how many festivals we have. That is never going to happen. So, you really want the best business people, the people that understand the business, and can support the good times and the bad. Think about what happens when winter comes. All right, and the sales just crash in the winter. You want a businessman that can, or woman, that can make it through the hard times as well as the good, and as far as the town making money, it's all through these fees and sales taxes. So, I actually agree, like, I have struggled with this, that I wanted there to be a limit, but I'm not sure that's in the best interest of the town's financial perspective. That is all.
Okay, thank you, Jer. Yes, Karen?
You know, I'm, of course, all for this thing, and all for getting the money, and that's the reason, the whole reason for this thing, but it's more than just the money. It's also the character of the town, and I just don't want to see row upon row of pot stores. I think three is sufficient for the size of this town, and, you know, there's a lot of people that didn't want to vote for this because of the change in character of the town. And, you know, I have said to myself, I may live to regret my ever starting this thing. So I think moderation is better, and, you know, I just, the town doesn't need to be greedy. Anything we get from this will be a bonus, so.
Can you still hear me?
Yes, we can, Jer.
The, Michelle's idea about the number of shops per block, that might be the best way.
I like that.
That might be the best way to deal with it, actually. That is more what I was thinking. You don't want three dispensaries right in a row, because that was the only buildings available. You know, no more than a shop or two per block, I think is a better way to deal with it. At least that way, they're spread apart, and that limits the number that you can have, period. Rather than putting an arbitrary- that limits the number that you can have, period. Rather than putting an arbitrary number out there, number of shops per block.
That sounds good.
I'd like to withdraw my motion with Nick's permission and rephrase it.
Okay.
No, you've got to keep it, Dave.
I'm not gonna duke it out on Zoom.
Let's step up.
That's fine.
So, I do like what Jared just said. I think the main fear is this Wild West thing or a Trinidad kind of situation. I think that's what we're all trying to avoid. So I'd like to make a motion that we allow no more than three shops per block, including both sides of the street. Does that, does that make sense?
Yeah, but I think it's too much.
Too much, so two shops, two shops per block on both sides. See, I want to be clear because they could be one side of the street and the other side of the street. So I want to make sure we're being any city block, including both sides of the street, no more than two shops.
Correct. Just so for information, there are approximately six blocks that fall within the C1, C2 zone. So if you're saying two per block, that's, and six blocks. Just so you're aware.
Well, then we'd have to say one or point five.
I just wanted you to be aware of how many blocks you were talking about.
Yeah, thank you. That's good information. Maybe, um, maybe one per block would be more appropriate. And I see a head shaking for that, so.
Yeah, that, that seems reasonable.
Yeah, okay, so one, one shop, one retail or medicinal marijuana shop per city block, including both sides of the street.
Okay, Michelle.
Can we change that to an and/or? Because my understanding is that they can both be in the, both retail and medical can be in the same shop.
Yep.
Yes.
All right. Do we have a second on that?
Yep, we'll try it again.
All right, Kami, did you have something to say?
Yeah, I mostly just wanted to say, what about a combination of the two? And I, I didn't hear a final motion, but it sounds like that's what we're doing is a limit of six with no more than two per block or one block. I don't know, maybe repeat the motion? It just seems like a combination of the two. The number of stores and the number of block, the number on a block would seem to make less.
Okay, let me repeat the motion, make sure we have it correct. That there will be no more than one shop per block, including both sides of the street of retail and or medicinal or marijuana. Correct? All right, do we have any other discussion from the board on this? Okay, Suzanne.
Hi, I'm, I'm kind of concerned the way this discussion is going because I would have liked to have commented on items on page one, two, and three that I have concerns about. So I'm a little unsure about when the public is going to be able to comment on this. We didn't get this ordinance until last night to look at it. So how can we even have time as public to, to address our board members, to write our concerns down while they're making these decisions? Especially if next meeting will, might be the final reading and adoption of this. It's completely unfair. I don't think there were any normal citizens who are involved in this working group. And I'm a little concerned. So that being said, I do believe that limiting the number is really important. I, I mean, I have other comments I want to make about page one, and I'm not quite sure when you're gonna let me talk about that. If that's at the very end, that you'll finally let people talk. How does, it almost needs a work session, really, something a little less formal. So we, there's information that I think is missing. It would be nice for you to look at a map of the town that the town administrator provides to show you exactly what you're looking at when you're making decisions. How do we know people aren't gonna start converting properties to C1 and C2 now with variances? So we can slowly spread more and more per block through the town. When you talk about the population of fifteen hundred, remember, what, half of those are children? I mean, why don't you think about how many households we have? When you think, what, is that eight hundred? When you think about how many stores we need. And it's also probably good to be a little bit more conservative in the get-go because it's harder to put the cat in the bag than let it come out a little bit more. And I know Denver is really dealing with problems with gentrification where people are being pushed out of their neighborhoods and their houses because the rent prices have skyrocketed because this is such a high dollar business that normal people can't compete against it. And you will be forcing people out of this community. So I, I think trustee Beddinger's concerns are very valid. And trustee Knutson, but I do think six is still a lot. And I, I mean, you have six blocks right now, but how many more blocks of commercial space might we be seeing as people convert their property slowly to commercial? And when you start looking at the industrial spaces, you're moving closer and closer to the residential because of the way this town was laid out for the fruit packing industry. And it's not conducive. You, you just don't want to mix the marijuana sales. And it looks like, according to this ordinance, it's opening it up to growing in those shops too. I don't think this is a very clear ordinance. So I, I want to speak on that a little bit more, but it's, it's diverging from what you're currently voting on. I, I, I'm, but more than anything, I'm just confused about when you're gonna let the public comment on this.
Here's what my proposition is. We're gonna go through this page by page of the board. And the public will have input on any motions that are made to change this ordinance. When we get to the back end of it, then we'll have a public comment period on the ordinance as a whole.
Okay, and at that time, what if we, like, the, this not saying that they're marijuana stores? It doesn't sound like it's really confining this ordinance to just selling marijuana. It sounds like you can grow it in your store from the way this is worded.
Suzanne, we will take that up.
Yep. Okay. Thank you.
All right. So. Paige. We're restricting comments simply to this motion. Go ahead.
Sorry, I thought I had unmuted already. I have an overarching observation to make, so I will wait until I can make an overarching observation, if you'll let me know when that is. Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Even, we are only taking comments on this motion. What would you like to say?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And is this motion, are, are you saying that the, the amount of stores?
Yes. One per block.
Well, I guess I, I'm more valuable on an overriding comment, so I can wait for that for later. But I think, you know, I, I was in Boulder when, when the legality first started. And, you know, for a while, you would drive down the street and two or three dispensary stores that opened overnight. We have far less dispensaries in the state of Colorado than we did ten years ago. So I think Jer is absolutely right. The idea of downtown Peonia having six stores. I, I agree a hundred percent with the entire working committee and, and what Jer is saying, and that it's not gonna happen. What I do think though, and maybe this isn't, I think it is related about a mayor to number of stores. I would like to know, I would like to stretch the boundaries. And maybe this is better to be discussing later. But I feel that the town has not taken the opportunity that it could be right now to really brand itself as. Well, I'm.
Yeah, if you would bring that up when we finish our page by page thing. Thank you. All right, Skylar, only on the one shop per block.
Thank you. This is only regarding the limit of, of shops or, or not to limit it. I would offer my sort of humble experience, which is working in a, in a business that's tangentially related to the industries in Colorado, Oregon, Washington, and other states that have dealt with this type of, this type of regulation. And what we've pretty much seen universally across the board is that states that put limits on the number of licenses preserved the local business environment. And states that did not do that led to a, we know this green rush effect that dramatically over expanded the local markets, leading to dramatic impacts on local employment and just many negative effects. This is not a scenario where we want to let the free market decide because what is gonna happen, I think Karen expressed some concern about the, the, you know, appearance of the community, you know. We may not agree on everything there, but I actually do think that's a wise concern is there's people that are gonna depend on these businesses for jobs. And if they depend on these businesses, thinking all these businesses are going to start being successful and then they all fail. That's a bad thing. So I think I just really strongly recommend the, the consideration of this motion. I think it'd be wise to limit the number of stores.
Okay, thank you, Skylar. All right, anything else? All right, seeing none, we have a motion in a second to have one per block, both sides of the block, retail and or medicinal. All right. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Okay, that motion carries. All right, Bill, you had a comment on the first paragraph, I believe, on page.
Yeah, I did. Let me find it again. Page fifty-five, paragraph A. Upon receipt of notice from the state license authority for any, of any application for a license under the Colorado marijuana code. But shouldn't we restrict that to the marijuana store, retail marijuana store? Because what if they got an application in there for growing or packaging? Things like that. This doesn't specify.
I thought it said Colorado retail marijuana. So retail.
There is retail marijuana cultivation facility license, retail marijuana products manufacturing license.
Okay.
We're not saying.
All right, Beau?
Yeah, I think we'll just mark it up, make sure that it's a consistency issue and if it needs to be updated, we, we can certainly do that with the, the next round.
All right. Okay, so page fifty-six. Comments, yes, Dave?
I think it's a little onerous to expect the town treasurer or the town finance person to hold a $10,000 cash bond. I think we should just leave it, and I'm talking about paragraph C. Just leave it that people have a, have the bond required, a good and sufficient bond. I think giving them that alternative of giving us cash that we have to keep track of is just a pain in the butt. That's the technical term for it.
Correct?
So just to explain why, the reason for that is because a lot of the conversation that's been had, and I can tell you that this ordinance is has very minor changes in comparison. This is the same ordinance that was provided to the board prior to the election and then brought at the end of the year after the election. And then it's just had the minor changes to it. So this isn't a whole new ordinance, but the, a lot of conversation throughout the entire process was talking about wanting to make sure that local individuals that may not be coming into attempting the business here with a, a large amount of funds or investors. And so is there another option beyond that bond that may make it a little bit more reasonable for them to be able to afford to go through the process? And that was why that is included in there.
Okay.
I'm just giving information. I am not in any way trying to sway anyone one way or another, just providing some of the, some of the conversation that was had with the, the community members that participated in the group.
Yes, Michelle.
I'm just not familiar with how that process works with a cash bond, but I wonder if we could, rather than requiring town staff to accept or to hold that, if we could have an arrangement with our bank where they have a restricted account and the applicant could deposit directly to the restricted account with the bank?
Banks are the problem.
We would, we would be the one that would be doing the deposit in a restricted account once it was provided to the town in conjunction with the application fees. Typically, that's the way that would work the, just like when, when somebody does an excavation on town property, they're required to provide a bond. They give that to the town, depending on the situation and the amount of the bond, we either hold it at town or it go, would be deposited.
Okay, thanks.
Karen?
How much is a $25,000 bond? Isn't it $2,500 or something like that? I mean, it might be harder to come up with $10,000 in cash than to pay, pay for the bond.
I, I don't know what the cost for the bond would be. And that was one of the reasons it wasn't either or option.
But, you know, if you, if you're, if you're gonna bail somebody out of jail and you have to come up with a bond, it's, you pay 10%.
It's even less than that.
Is it? Well, then. You know, this doesn't look like you're saving anybody any money.
But banks are the problem.
Banks can't take marijuana money.
That's why we made an option for a cash bond.
Is that this $25,000 bond, does it have to be per year? Does it have to be renewed every year? Just how does it work? I don't know.
Let me get back to the ordinance.
Yeah.
Maybe we should ask our treasurer to give us advice on that, because I think we all agree that the, we're trying to encourage local people to come in here. But my own ignorance about the mechanics of how a, a bond actually works in real life. I think that's what's confusing me. So maybe we should just let this go for now until we have better information.
Okay, yeah.
Let's move on. To, all right, page fifty-seven. Yes, Michelle?
All right, I'm still on fifty-six. The section on area maps. So I'm just trying to understand the requirement. Does this mean that the, the applicant would have to provide a two-scale map to us and they have to fill in what every use around them is on that map? Or is there anything that the town provides? Like, are we giving them a starting point when we know some of the businesses in the area?
Typically with the applications, the applicant is responsible to contact Delta County GIS to provide us the map with all the locations pinpointed on it.
Okay, so it is, it's GIS data. It's not going door, door to door to find out what's happening at the businesses.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, now can we move on? I guess. All right. Page fifty-seven. We want residency requirement.
So for clarification, the pink comments are mine, the blue comments are the responses from Beau.
Yes, Michelle?
So, if I'm understanding correctly, what we'd be trying to get at with the residency requirement is to support more, more local business owners. But I think that our restriction on formula businesses may also help us accomplish the same thing without adding that residency requirement.
And I wonder if there's some legal ramifications. And I wonder if there's some legal ramifications on that too, that restraint of trade or something of the kind?
You know, there's a statewide, or there was a statewide limitation that you had to be a one-year resident in order to apply for a state license. So I take that as the, and that's still been upheld. So I take that as kind of within our bounds if we wanted a local limitation. My concern is an enforcement one in terms of the ability from the staffing to be able to kind of support that decision. And then also what the market would support, local versus somebody that might be, maybe has a little bit more outside wherewithal.
Okay, thank you. So does the board have an opinion? Yes, Michelle?
I wouldn't support a residency requirement.
We could go with the one-year like the state does. But, but the state is already going to require a one-year Colorado residence. Right? Is that in the state statutes?
I can just say the community supports the residency requirement.
Okay. All right, so it looks like that is not go so down to we need to make sure that our language is consistent throughout the document to include resident, retail and medicinal, correct?
Yeah, so that's just a housekeeping cleanup that we'll do when we do the revision on this agenda or this ordinance.
Okay. And then the next B from schools, do we want to cut it down to 500 feet, same as liquor licenses?
Yes.
Seems to be nodding over there. We have nods all over the place. Okay.
Okay.
Anything else on page fifty-seven? All right, seeing none, let's move on to page fifty-eight. Yes, Dave?
I think delivery would keep distracted drivers off the road.
And if we let liquor people do it, why not marijuana?
I just then the marijuana store would have to have more employees to deliver this stuff. I don't, I don't like, I don't like delivery.
But it's also a COVID-related thing too.
Well, yeah, and you don't know, you don't know what, how many underage people are in the house that you're delivering to, you know?
But you don't know how many underage people are living with the people you're selling marijuana to in the shop.
That's true, but at least they're not, but at least they have to come and do it in front of you.
Yeah, Nick.
Especially with medicinal marijuana. I think delivery, you know, would be a good thing. So that, and also item one, two, and three should be indentured.
Right.
And that's just throughout the, yeah. You'll, you'll look at all throughout the the document. Yeah. Okay, thanks, Corinne.
Of course.
Carrie?
Just a suggestion, maybe just delivery with medicinal.
Yeah. That's good.
Do you want to make a?
I just want to add that my only concern to that is how are we going to enforce that, especially when medicinal and retail can be in the same shop?
Okay, well, yeah, Michelle?
Do we need a motion for this or are we just discussing?
Let's go ahead and put this as a motion.
I move that we allow delivery with the same regulations we require for liquor delivery in town.
Okay, do I have a second? All right. Any more discussion on this? Okay, anything from the public on delivery? Okay, seeing none, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, that passes. Anything else on page fifty-eight? Okay, don't see anything. Anything on page fifty-nine? Yes, Dave?
Is there anything in this ordinance that would prevent someone, and I'm referring to paragraph C? Why couldn't they put a sign on the 133 corridor? I mean, we're restricting signs in town. But we have no power over things outside of town, and I'm just wondering how that works.
The signs are regulated by the MED on what they can look like and how big they can be and where they could go, but a business that's in town advertising in the county would be subject to the county and MED regulations.
So they would be.
Yes, if the county allows it and the MED allows it, yes.
So what are the regulations for any other business inside the town to be advertising off their premises?
There are location and size limitations. And yeah, that would be it.
Just thinking about consistency there, it seems like we're being a little punitive to these businesses because in some of the places they might build, they may want to have directional signs. It's just a thought.
Okay, anything else on page fifty-nine? Okay, moving on, page sixty. Okay, and this is about transfer of licenses. Yes, Tammy?
I'm not talking about transfer of licenses. If anybody wants to talk about that first.
Well, well, go ahead.
Okay, so there's a, in B, there's a therefore with no E on the end. I think they need thereof, and there's maybe three or four of these throughout the document. Therefore is for that reason, and thereof is about the subject just mentioned. So I think that should be thereof, and there are maybe three or four or more of those therefores without an E in there that probably need to be thereof.
No, no. Disagree.
Yeah, well, it then spell therefore correctly. So stating the reasons therefore?
Yes.
The reasons why?
Maybe, maybe you're, maybe, maybe you're not old enough, but that's correct in the old, old English.
Well, Mark does a misspelling in my book, so, but, okay.
There's English and then there's legal English, two different things. All right.
Well, I think that, I think the good, the point here is that there needs to be consistency in terms of the therefore usage, old or new, contemporary or historical.
Okay. I'm all for consistency. Let's move on to the idea of transferring licenses. Shall we transfer licenses if it goes with the business? Or shall we make everybody get a new license?
And how is it you do with liquor licenses?
You can transfer a liquor license with the business.
With the business?
Yes.
Okay, so we do it the same way as the liquor licenses then? But then we don't get paid?
Yes, we do.
It sounds like the fees are almost identical.
Okay, so we get paid from the new owner?
Yeah. No, I don't see anybody jumping up and down. Yeah, Dave?
I think the main thing we're trying to stop is speculation in licenses here. Is there something that stops people from speculating in licenses?
That would be the non-transferable thing of the license.
Okay.
You have to be the person who owns it.
It's also about him sitting idle.
But we have a thing on it being sitting idle. It can't sit for more than 30 days idle.
Right.
Okay, anything else on that page? All right, seeing none, let's go to page sixty-one. Okay, seeing nothing, let's go to page sixty-two. Okay, seeing none, let's go to page sixty-three.
Okay. This is the occupation, occupational.
Five dollars, the five-dollar fee for.
Transaction fee, yeah, actually.
Okay, anything, well, anybody going to complain about my signature?
No, Mary.
Okay. All right. We have been at this long and hard. What I'm going to suggest that we do is we take a five-minute break. And then we'll come back and take public comment on the entire ordinance. So everybody hang in there five more minutes and the public can speak. All right.
Thank you.
Starting now. Okay, we have the board. Corinne, are you back? Well, I think we can go on as long as Amanda's around. Are you around, Amanda?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, then let's go ahead and get this meeting going together again. All right. Oh, we need Corinne to unmute. I'm sorry. Well, let's try. Skyler, try star six.
Okay, I am here. Thanks for your patience. This is a question slash a comment. I understand that the occupational slash excise tax was approved by a ballot measure. I personally think the comment I'd make is I think personally my understanding is that many people may have misunderstood the nature of that tax as a dollar amount versus a percentage amount. And my comment is that it's really unfortunate because that would be easily one of the highest excise taxes I've ever seen in this industry. It is, to put it excessive, to put it as excessive is light. And it will undoubtedly hamper sales and therefore damage the town's ability to generate revenue from this industry. So my question is, how would an individual or group of individuals in the town go about proposing an amendment to that ordinance?
It would need taking back to the voters.
Yeah, how, can you, can you briefly explain that process? Like, how does one go about submitting something for that?
Corinne, do you know what the process is for amending, doing a ballot amendment to an ordinance? Oh, you're muted.
The ordinance, sorry, and I just came back in. You guys were already talking. Sorry, I took a little longer. An ordinance can be amended by the board. If it needed the board could either make the decision that they wanted to put it out on a ballot for amended language to be voted upon. Or the process would be a ballot initiative that was driven by a public community member, and there's a multitude of steps that they would have to go through and receive signatures to present that to the board and get it on a ballot.
Thank you for that answer. I guess my humble request would be that the board consider a proposed amendment that deals with that, that factor. Again, in consideration of the fact that a sort of a well-researched look at the broader industry, both statewide and nationally would reveal this to be a incredibly uncommon method of going about taxing these sales.
Thank you, Skyler. Dave?
I'll defer to Karen. Trust people in jury.
Okay, go, Karen.
This, this, excuse me, this transaction tax really five dollars per transaction was modeled after another town that, that charges $15 per transaction tax. And that's where they really made their money for the town, but that it also encouraged larger purchases from the buyer because if you buy I don't know how much, $10 worth of marijuana, you're going to pay a $5 fee. If you buy $100 worth of marijuana, you pay a $5 fee. It's, it's per transaction. And that's why, I mean, we didn't make it up. We borrowed it from some other town that seemed to say that you really ought to do this. This works very well. So that's my comment.
Okay, thank you, Karen. Did you have anything else you wanted to say, Dave? Okay, page?
Am I unmuted? Hello, everyone. Thank you very much, Mary. I have a question. It's really a clarification of intention. On page one, I think, I believe it's the. On page one, I think, I believe it's the fourth, whereas it says that the special election held on November third, two thousand and twenty, the voters of Peonia have determined that the town of Peonia should allow retail marijuana establishments. And I want to point out that the ballot language said, shall the establishment in operation of retail and medical marijuana stores be permitted? So I voted for stores. I did not vote for establishment, and this ordinance has broadened what you're allowing to enter into Peonia to what constitutes an establishment. And the Colorado Constitution defines establishment as a marijuana cultivation facility, a marijuana testing facility, a marijuana product manufacturing facility, or a retail marijuana store. So I, I feel like I wouldn't have voted for this if we were gonna get cultivation, testing, and manufacturing as well. And I believe that the marijuana, the retail marijuana store definition is what was intended here. And it seems like from the discussion I've listened to tonight, you all are thinking that you are only gonna be dealing with stores. So my question is, why has this been broadened to establishments?
Yes, no?
Again, I think that this is kind of goes to the the number of different hands that have been in this with drafting, if you will. There's no intent here to expand beyond the traditional, the ballot question itself with respect to the retail and the medical store. And so I think that it's just a consistency and kind of throughout this evening and throughout this process, we've noted that there's some of the inconsistencies with the language, but by no means was this an attempt to do an end around on on the what the voter approved for use, so.
All right. So, um, anyone else? Yes, Steven?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just feel that um, I don't, I don't see the town taking the opportunity of this current discussion about having cannabis stores to promote the town of Peonia. And I think that you can do that by making a disruptive statement, say like, if you suddenly declare, we're considering having the town own one of the dispensary stores. Not that we're, that's never gonna happen, but speculating on that, we get great media attention. We probably could get our dear Governor Jared Paulus to make a public comment that he has to investigate whether it's legal for the town of Peonia to own its own marijuana store. The the town in the valley, you know, a lot of us who have been pioneers and bringing marijuana into the legal world, we have a lot of friends still sitting in prison. I have friends that, you know, I mean, ungodly amounts of time, decades and decades, sitting in a cage for the same thing that this town is discussing as a way to help make uh, make the budget balance. So I don't see you, we had two dispensary stores in downtown Peonia ten years ago. And and we were on the cover of High Times Magazine in the nineteen seventies as one of the places, one of the best places to grow marijuana. I, I just feel that it's, you're not taking the opportunity to get some great press. I, I think you should be speaking with each other as a council and making the target goal, we're getting on CNN with about this. You could do that. And those would be good dollars coming in. One of the things I'm concerned with, and I saw a lot of this happen in Boulder. I helped, as did Jared, with some of the original wordage on the state laws. But one of the things that we found discovered in Boulder is that when we were, you know, having two or three dispensaries opening up literally every week, because for a while, you know, we call it the golden era, there was no regulation whatsoever. Um, you could just put a sign up and you're in business. But one of the things that I'm concerned with is you've got a small town. And I remember Evan, um, the former intern for the for the town manager of Peonia, who's out in Utah now, Evan giving his, um, when he chose the towns in his presentation as to why he felt it was good for Peonia to pursue this. And I'm all for people experimenting with whatever plant God brought onto the planet. They should be able to do that, in my personal opinion. But Evan chose the towns that he chose. I watched that presentation at a town council meeting here in Peonia. My big concern is, is that those towns are not reflective of Peonia. None of those towns that Evan used in his presentation is gonna be drawing in people where they suddenly discover Peonia and they decide to stay here. And that's fine, as long as they're arriving with a bit of a bankroll in their pocket. If all we're gonna do is have some marijuana stores in town that is gonna draw in a crowd nationwide that suddenly needs money and starts breaking into cars downtown. If you, if the net result is you have to hire a new police officer for Neil's Police Force, it's gonna be a wash. And and I really feel a lot of this is the council getting political about it, using this as an opportunity for PR campaigns, using this as an opportunity to really take what this valley has always been. This is all, if you took marijuana away from Delta County, and it's been like this, especially since the coal mines have shut down, the county would blow away in the next windstorm that thankfully we never get out here. It, it's the economic driver of this valley. And the council is, you're not gonna get it from the county commissioners down in Delta. The Peonia Town Council, I feel, is is not taking the opportunity as much as they could to brand this town for what it is. And it's not, we don't need, you know, when Boulder opened up, we had an enormous increase in homeless people. We had, and I'm not knocking the homeless. I've been homeless myself. I had in nineteen fifty-six Pontiac Star Chief and Station Wagon, that was my home in downtown Boulder. But this, this new, when, when it got legal and and since we don't have any dispensaries in the county here, so this is gonna be new ground. We had two dispensaries ten years ago. Now you're getting more. And 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 I think if all, if you're gonna make the mistake that Boulder did, which was basically, we just had a flood of people who wanted marijuana, and they could buy marijuana at a store and then walk down to our post office in downtown Boulder and mail it off to their people around the nation and make money, that's not what we need to be encouraging, I don't think.
Okay, Steven already had five minutes. Could you please make, summarize, please? Okay, all right. Suzanne? Suzanne?
I'm sorry, it didn't work. Um, this is so hard to do this on Zoom additionally. Um, so the comment that Paige brought up was very good. I think my understanding is when this ordinance was first presented, it was one that Ridgeway had perhaps. And so the language and the verbiage is was kind of tailored to perhaps what Ridgway voted on. So I know it sounds like this was not intentional, but it's something that needs to be corrected. Because you might know what you're thinking when you wrote on it and when you read it, but this ordinance isn't for what you're thinking right now. It's for what someone who comes into town who wants to do this reads and understands from it. And if it's ambiguous or if it's unclear, you're not gonna be able, the will of the voters is not going to be respected. Um, as we can see with a sales tax to the franchise fee. Um, that's not very clear in our ordinance, is it? It's not distinctly stated that this is the definition, and that's why we're having problems with it. So if there is, I think the will of the voters needs to be clearly stated in this ordinance. So there's no misunderstanding. And if people want to expand that definition in the future, that's another vote. Um, but for the time being, we need to respect what the voters said. Um, another issue that I'm having here that I find confusing is that you're using language saying that all applicable sections of the LDR apply to the marijuana stores. Well, I'd like to know specifically what those are. I'd like the town administrator to provide me with the applicable section so I can know what she's thinking about. Um, my understanding is if it's not mentioned in the LDR, it's not allowed, and you have to go through special review. But I'm confused because this is not an ordinance that's being put in the zoning code and the land use code. So why, why can you even use the planning commission um, to make determinations on it? The planning commission is merely there for the comprehensive plan and chapter sixteen, which is the land use regulations. So I think it's a little unclear and muddy. Um, perhaps the liquor, liquor stores aren't mentioned in the LDR, but I don't think that's a reason why we should start going in that direction with marijuana stores. Perhaps, perhaps the liquor stores need to be put back in. So, um, the thing that's a little scary, you have, you're mentioning that marijuana stores can only exist in certain zones. And we look to the LDR for um, kind of a consistency and security. We know that our rights are protected because we have extra rules in the LDR that give us due process. If a change is gonna be made to the zoning, for instance, we get noticing. There's a noticing requirement. But when you have a ordinance that's a regular police ordinance or just a general police ordinance, there are no noticing requirements. And a change can be made to that ordinance with a simple council vote, and no neighbors would ever know. So in, on this note, I really do think that there needs to be a zoning, it needs to be mentioned in the LDR. Sure, you can have a standalone ordinance, but it needs, the zoning portions of, or the land use portions of the marijuana code should be repeated in the form of a, um, a planning and zoning ordinance. Um, just for um, security and understanding, when I wanna know what is allowed in my neighborhood, I go to the zoning code. That's where we go. Um, you know, if you wanna see where gas stations are allowed or grocery stores, you go to the zoning ordinance. And I, I believe that we need to um, make that clear with the marijuana ordinance. So things are consistency, consistent, clear, and we know where to look for things in our code. Um, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, anyone else? Okay, seeing none. So shall we have a motion to accept this as amended? Or do we wanna see another version? Yeah, Dave?
Um, I don't think there's a huge rush to get this done immediately. Um, I think the fact that uh, this has not been posted to the public until yesterday, I think. Uh, although that we had an original ordinance out there and we discussed it. I really like to see things that we're gonna make decisions on in a meeting to be posted to the public by Friday so that people that work can look at them over the weekend. I just assume not vote on this and have two more readings and let it go that way. That's my own personal preference. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
I would agree with Dave that this, there's a lot of discussion here tonight, and the public needs to see a more complete document.
Okay. All right, so, sounds like, yes, Kim?
Yeah, I think to make sure that researching, somebody needs to research establishment versus store. And like Suzanne Watson said, put the language of the ballot into the ordinance. That's a, a good observation.
Okay, well, it seems like we have a pretty much a consensus that we'll see this again in a revised version. Okay, Jerry, you get one minute.
Um, the question on the tax, I believe his name was Skylar brought up. We discussed that thoroughly. We've pretty much come to the conclusion that that needs to be revisited, that that wasn't done correctly. Um, it needs to be a percentage. And as far as the types of business, the zoning is, you know, establishment versus whatever, that the zoning takes care of that. And remember that the board has the power to say, no, we're not allowing it to grow right there. We're not allowing a testing facility right there. You know, like, that's, you have a lot of power, is what it comes down to, to either approve or deny. And so leaving the ability to leave those other revenue-creating businesses in the fold is pretty critical. Also, you didn't, you never had to put this up to the voters. You did that as a courtesy.
All right, Karen, your time is up.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, so let's move on. Oh, stop it. Ah! I'm sorry, I can't shut my phone up. Come on. I'm sorry. Okay. Five minutes. All right, let's move on to ordinance twenty-one T B D accessory dwelling unit regulations. Yes, Michelle?
Given the time this evening and that this ordinance is not super time-sensitive, I would move to table this to our next meeting.
Okay, do we have a second? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, that motion is tabled. All right, next we have resolution twenty-one oh three modification to encroachment of liquor license establishments. Okay. This is pretty simple. Um, it came to my attention that, like, the Blue Sage wanted to put tables out, but we had made our ordinance saying that we could, our resolution saying we could only do it for restaurants, when actually the state law says that any establishment basically has an on-premises liquor license can do this. And so all this is, is to change our resolution to match the state law. Okay, any discussion on this? Yes, Bill?
Is this anything to do with the emergency orders where the there's restriction on capacity? That's why we're doing this?
Yeah, it's part, the liquor license, the liquor licensing people at the state decided, both state decided that they would loosen up the liquor license laws to be able to allow people to spread out into the streets specifically so that they could still run their businesses and meet the occupancy requirements.
Are we gonna keep the streets and the sidewalks open for regular traffic?
Yeah, they have to accommodate for that.
And this would only run as long as there's an emergency ordinance in place?
The states will expire October thirty-first. And so ours will expire at the same time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Nick? Oh, you're, you're muted, Nick.
Um, section two, on page two, at the top there, I think we need to strike in a though it should read, the order declaring a local disaster for the town of Peonia, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, that's it.
Anything else from the board? Okay, can I get a motion?
Literally, we've adopted resolution twenty-one oh three as with the change that trustee Johnson recommended.
Okay, do I have a second?
Okay.
All right. Paige?
Um, where are you wanting, Paige or Suzanne? Two, three, four.
This is Paige. This is Paige, and I'm sorry I did not have a comment on this issue and then I dropped my phone. Sorry. Bye.
No problem. Suzanne?
Um, I wanted to say before you voted on the last, the item before, I had a quick comment. And I'm just wondering when I can ask that question.
I'm gonna ask it when it comes back. All right. Any public comment on resolution twenty-two-one oh three? All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, opposed? All right, that motion carries. All right. Okay, we are at eight minutes until our mandated closing time. Would somebody like to, uh, you think we can do the short term survey in eight minutes? Shell shaking her head, yes. Okay. And let's look at the short term ser, short term rental survey. Comments? Yes, Karen?
I don't understand what the, what the fees are. Basic plan can, I don't understand what this is all about.
That's about either.
Sorry, that was not clear. That is what it would cost for us to use Survey Monkey to publish the survey publicly. Um, and so that, if we wanted to include more than ten questions in the survey, that's the cost associated.
How many questions are in the survey?
More than ten.
Yeah. Yeah, Michelle?
Yeah, there are currently more than ten, but I think we could make some minor edits and combine some of the questions and get down to ten questions pretty easily. So with the survey, what the GAPS committee was really looking for from the board is just confirmation that this is what we want to know from the public regarding short term rentals and that it's worded in such a way that it's not particularly biased. And if the board has any particular changes, we're open to them. Otherwise, we would just like to get the survey out and see what people think.
Okay, suggestions, comments? Yeah.
I'll just write my comments to the, um, well, I guess I'll send them to Corinne and she can send them to Mick and Michelle.
Okay, great. Would that work for everybody? We have comments? Okay, great. All right. Sounds like it's a winner, Michelle. Okay, Suzanne, we're talking about the um, short term rental survey only.
I didn't raise my hand. I, I, I didn't have anything to say on this one.
I had a hand up on next to your name. All right. Okay, um, let's do the consent agenda and then we may let the rest of the reports go for this evening. All right. Can I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent to junior.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, seeing none. All in favor of accepting the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that motion passes. We have five minutes. The mayor has nothing to say. It's in the report. Can we have a, anybody else wanna do their committee reports quickly? Yeah, ma'am.
Our next uh, meeting is via Zoom on Wednesday, March third at ten AM. Nothing else to report.
Perfect, okay. Public Works, you wanna say anything?
I don't. Uh, Tammy?
Tammy's frozen. Oh, dear. Tammy's frozen. I guess Tammy doesn't have anything to say.
We had our meeting on, I reported our meeting earlier in the month. Our meeting earlier in the month, but we don't expect to meet again until March timeline, so.
There, she's back. Okay, did you have anything to say, Tammy?
Uh, just the tree board, nothing new to report. Um, we're looking at the um, tree survey hopefully this week. We meet at five o'clock tomorrow via Zoom. Advisory Water meets at six o'clock via Zoom tomorrow night. That's it.
Okay, thank you. All right. All right, Suzanne, we have three minutes.
Okay, um, this is um, just for the GAPS committee. I wanted to say this before you tabled um, your ordinance. Um, I think we need to put the
Suzanne, it's been
I know, but the thing is you're following, the GAPS committee about the ADUs, you're following the wrong process. You need to let the town
All right, I call this meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody. It's been a long night. We did some hard work. Thank you very much.